We will call this meeting to order at six thirty. Will the secretary please take the role?
Trusty Bloom, yeah. Trusty Jacoborti is absent. Trusty Fairbanks is here. Trusty Boss, your trusty truth.
Here.
Trusty Gunbulu, here. And trustee Rogers, here.
Thank you, everyone. The next item will be the approval of minutes from our September regular meeting. Does anyone have any questions or corrections for that? For those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moving seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, was it a favor say a?
I was gonna say all abstained.
Okay. Those in favor say hi. Those opposed say nay. Any objections, they are approved. Next item will be public comments. I did not receive anything via email or the firm. Do you have any in-person public comments? If you could please keep your name before you.
Oh, yeah, I planned that. I know I. To do this. Hello, my name is Susan Riley and I've lived in Oak Park since nineteen sixty-two. And I occasionally post on Facebook what gives me joy. I often list the library as one of those things. It was recently suggested that y'all need to hear this. So here I am, ready to share. When people think of the public library, they seldom think about all the services a public library has to offer. Yes, of course, you can borrow books, movies, and music. The Oak Park Public Library is more of a community center. They have technology programs from computer aided design with three D printing to resume building and many, many more things. There are intergenerational events too and multicultural events as well. The book bike makes gives me great joy. I love the fact that libraries not bound by walls but encompasses the whole community. By the way, I'm a second generation doober whose mother had received her first library card from Miss May's. She just passed. She was ninety-five. So does my public count.
There's number, we do appreciate that. It is wonderful to hear the positives from the, from the community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wake up good night.
You too.
Thank you very much.
And with that, tough act to follow, trusty comments and calendar.
I am going to be going next week down to the Illinois Library Association for Trusty Day. And looking forward to it. And I was surprised, do you know how many library trustees there are in Illinois? About forty-eight hundred. It's six hundred public libraries of various positions. And it's, I think, going to be really exciting to see Illinois at the forefront of public libraries.
Excellent.
Pixar didn't happen Ted, we need a, we need a full report when you get back. Thank you.
All right, any other trustee comments? All right, we'll go into our executive director report.
Wow, I didn't know mine was going so fast. I was enjoying the meeting so much. Okay, you are my report there. A few highlights. One thing I want to highlight from my report is our leadership team training. We just had some training recently. As you know, we've had some changes in our department and I'm still relatively new. And so I thought it'd be a good idea and I checked in with the team and we, they said yes, that we, we have a life labs that we work with, which is a, it's, it's like an HR and it's a training, it's a leadership training corporation they work with. So we had a person that we worked in before come in with us and just talk to us about what it means to be a leadership team, what we want to do for the future and all the things you see there. We also came up with a, a vision statement. So that was, that was pretty cool to come up with. And so I just, that's something I hadn't had the opportunity to do and I was really thankful for the opportunity to do that with our team. I thought it was worthwhile. Okay, so that's just one big highlight from my report. Any other questions about anything else that put?
I had a question about the, the leadership training. Is that ongoing or was that a one-time? Event?
We do have ongoing training. We, we've had trainings the most of this year, maybe every other month or so, or quarterly at the very least. And we do plan on continuing for next year. So what we focused on this year was coaching, coaching and oh, yes, and how to have your one-on-one conversations, thank you, with your team. So it's been great and so we'll definitely continue it. And so this was kind of continuation of that. It was born out of something that came up out of the training when she mentioned, like, what is your team's vision, your leadership team's vision? So I actually called her and I was like, I really liked what you said and can we like pull that out and make that a bigger thing? And she said, sure. So it was been two hours or so. We just kind of took some time on a Friday. And it was, it was great. So it, it just, it focuses back in. We now have it on our agenda at the top. So every week we can see it. So it's not just something we talked about in the drawer and never see it again. It's always there. So that was something different from what I usually have on my report. So not to reach you the whole thing. So that was my one highlight that I have to share.
I appreciate that because I was reading coming across somewhere where it is often that some, some people don't get training of how to be a supervisor or manager until five years into having such a position. And it's like, God, all the people who, you know, it's like, how is that not helping? It's like not helping the organization. It's not helping that person. It's not helping the people who work for them. So thank you for doing that to like make sure, you know, that staff who, you know, you know, are in that position because it is something that is every, everyone could use and also use a refresher on.
It's true that, you know, people think if you're in the role, you already know how to do it. They know how to be a supervisor or a manager or how to manage people. And that's, that's true. It's not always the case. And even if you do know, it's just good. So you don't know everything. We all, things change. We all could use like a refresher or like tips on how to do better. So the management team also has had similar training too. So then those for once are reports to my team. So then they also, so then we're speaking the same language. So then they have to support and manage their teams. Like we all, we all have been taught like the same skills and then we can, you know, really put them into practice as an organization. So.
That was gonna be my next question. What, what was the level of leadership that was able to go? But you're saying that the leadership team here was able to go to this one, but that there was a, a management team meeting that mirrored.
Right. And so for that one, that was just like a mini session unto itself. We have ongoing ones and then we just got notification, maybe a month or so ago, that they have like a two-point-old version of what we just got the whole year long. And so we definitely have plans to sign up for that to do the next level and do it at both layers. So I'm excited about that.
Good. Staff development is.
It's important. Okay, so in the, any questions, any highlights, any questions about Rob or Stephen's report? Just want to pause and give opportunity. If there's anything you want to flesh out.
For Rob's, just a, I think I was like, it's not in terms of like what was in it, but in terms of the presentation. My wife had noted, was looking at the, at the thing I had printed out a few pages to, to look at. And she thought that perhaps switching the columns from the type of advocacy and then the number of people who receive it would help with public consumption of it. I mean, we've had that conversation. We've asked that question at the table to clarify that. But if someone is looking at our report from outside, the, it makes more sense to go from category to number of people. It just in terms of how someone looks at it. The content is fine, but it's just in terms of, you know, someone who hasn't had the chance to ask the question directly.
Thank you for that feedback. I will share. Rob was not feeling well tonight, so he's not here. So thank you for passing that on. One thing about Ross I wanted to highlight was, we talked about the overdose prevention kit before, but it looks like he has some number tally, numbers tally. If you look at the very bottom, towards the bottom of the last paragraph, about eight hundred overdosees being disseminated. I, I, I have a feeling it's not just from our location, but that's still like, it shows the need for the box and it shows that people are using it at our locations and the other locations. So I thought.
I mean, there's only seven locations. So even slice that eight hundred, that's still, yeah, quite a bit. So.
I'm happy that we're part of, you know, addressing that challenge of.
I have questions on Stephen's report. I just would love to hear more about the restorative practices, planning committee, what's happening there? And peace circles and just where that's where we are on that. Cause I, I think as a board, I was like, board members to get more up to speed on that as well. So we know what's going on because I, you know, it's really wonderful. What's happened before and then the training switched and pandemic and all that.
Yeah, we are currently on November sixth, we are offering two sessions for staff. Restorative practices one-on-one, that's not what it's called, but it's like an introductory to restorative practices. Offered two times for staff, first shift and second, second shift staff. And then the following week, we're going to do a refresher course for those who have already been trained. The current numbers are about thirty-three, thirty-three percent of the staff are trained. So just offering them a refresher course based on the training that Tatiana and I carried in.
Excellent. And will there be opportunities for board members? Cause we were going to do it at the time that the person got sick.
Right.
And then it got canceled. I think it was the.
That hasn't been in my, hasn't been in my plans.
Well, we got to talk about that or make a plan maybe so we can have you all have training. We'll do that. We'll talk about that.
Yeah, I would really like to get, get back and get back into that.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great. How are the affinity groups going? Are they, are they still going?
They are, they are still going. They just had their quarterly meal. Each one of them had a quarterly meal. To meet with the group this past, past three weeks, but they're going well.
I did have a question about the affinity groups and this, this kind of cropped up in my work life and it made me start thinking about it here. Do we have any thresholds where we say, you know, as members of leadership, you're not going to the affinity group because that disrupts people feeling open to share? Do we have anything like that that, that we've put in place? Do we feel like we need to? Like I know when we talk about unions, managers can't join the union. I know where I'm working, I'm part of the employee engagement. I got promoted and I'm like, well, I, I engage them by yelling at them at one-on-ones. Like that's, that, you know, I shouldn't be part of that. Do we feel like there's anything in the, and I know it's like, it's, it's a thin line to walk. Do we feel like we feel comfortable opening the affinity groups to all levels and everybody there? Or have we had any pushback from people feeling like having everybody there is stifling?
I have intentionally deliberately stepped away. As a time before I was a part of it, but I've stepped away just to, to break that uncomfortability with the affinity group that I was associated with. So. I know that managers do.
Concerned with the other two affinity groups.
I have not, I have not heard any of that from any of them.
And I would add to that. I, I didn't have that concern, but I also, Steve and I have talked about it and I've talked to some of the people who lead the groups in having it where if they like to share something with me and or the leadership team as far as something to get addressed or something we could do better or something we could add to. And so I've started that conversation with some of them. And so I agree with you, it's not to go. I told them not staying. I don't, it's your space. I don't want to. We're not trying to invade, but also if there's something that's going on, like I, I'd like to know about it. And if there's something we can help with, there's something we're not getting, like whatever it is. And so they've been open to that. I've started that conversation. So we'll see where that goes and what that can look like. But other than that, like Stephen said, it's, you know, it's their space. And we're not there to like, like cycle any kind of conversational flow and what they're doing.
I mean, ironically, I think before this wasn't a concern because we did not have very many people in leadership that would have fallen into any of these affinity groups. So I guess it's kind of a good problem to have now, but then I did have to step back and think like, are we, are we taking away people's ability to be authentic by having them sit down with their leadership when they're supposed to be vulnerable and authentic? So I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're, we're making sure that they're prioritized and their comfort is prioritized in those spaces. And so that we can keep them keep them doing what they need to do and giving feedback and giving support to everybody for sure. No, I'm really excited about the public. Your collaborations and your public.
The, the conference will be on the twenty-ninth, the, the January, the nineteenth and the twentieth. We're currently working with communication is staying to, to get the promotional campaign out. Recorded a few videos and have some, have some good stuff coming out in the coming month to share more broadly. The first day one is showcasing Oak Park Public Library, staff and community partners. Bill Chicago will be presenting, Oak Park Township will be presenting, a few members of the staff here will be presenting on day one. And then on day two, shout out to Alex Skinner and Joel Javier, who have made, made it so that people who are currently incarcerated, they will have their artwork displayed in the art gallery. And day two is focused on returning citizen population. So people who are currently incarcerated will have their artwork during that month in the art gallery, at least for the conference. So we're, we're excited about that. And we have a few organizations versus freedom, ex-cons for community and social change. Tyrone Mohammed, he'll be the keynote speaker for that day. And then we have a speaker series for returning citizens, how to spell that will be shown. And the, the people who are part of that speaker series will be presenting. And feeling questions for people who have inquiries about returning citizen population. And then finally we'll have a play written by some lifers, some people who are in life in prison, they wrote a play. And we have returning citizens who will be acting out this play on day two. So pretty excited about it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
So we can continue on to the four stats that's after Stephen and Rob's report. Just a brief highlight too, if you look at the, what caught my eye was the market penetration and the net promoter score on the, the first two. And if you recall, so that if you see how we stack up against our peers in terms of that, how far ahead we are, I was really excited about that. So that means the households using library at least one time, being active users. So that's especially in this day and age when we compete against so many other things for people's attention and care and use to see H10s arises inside me. We'll have Q four either probably in January, I guess, probably. Because I think we had the Q twenty-three before, but it just wasn't ready by the time the press, when it cut off by the time we had to go to press. But I just wanted to highlight that. And then also the net promoter score continues to rise. And if you look, as a reminder, if you look at what that means again is customer satisfaction and loyalty as well as for making future growth and to see the library keep growing that way. I'm excited about that too. In the other thing I want to highlight before we get to additions and terminations, I just wanted to acknowledge that it's Hispanic Heritage Month and we've had some wonderful programming. If you go back one to just the things that we've been doing for the month. And then we also have the online high school that started. I don't know if remember me mentioning that earlier, but that we did kick it off. So that's an opportunity for the public to receive a high school diploma, not a GED, but to actually go to classes. We just, we interview the people, we pay for the scholarships, so to speak. And so Rashmi, thank you for Rashmi and for Alex and the dental services team coordinating that. And along with collection development, putting that together to have the access to that opportunity. I've worked in libraries I had before. It is a really nice program. So again, we have opportunity to have a graduation and all that stuff at the end. So I'm excited about that because we, you know, we are community organization from our staff to the public. We want to have access to opportunities for education. I just hired a lot of, there are people who still do need their high school diploma as well. So I'm excited that we have to cut off.
That's so cool. Can you share how many people expressed interest or like apply? What was that process?
Well, it's an interview and you don't want, I think we have, we bought slots for five.
Three.
We.
We haven't had any applicants yet, but it's only been promoted for six weeks. And we think that this will be slow probably to, to grow even larger system library systems. They might get like, Alex was telling me, St. Louis had like twenty. So it's a, it's an important and impactful service, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna be high numbers. So, but we're hopeful that we'll hit our, our goal of free students.
Is it on a rolling basis then that they would be accepted or is there a calendar?
Well, it's, it's, it's a few thousand a person. So you do it probably like you budgeted for your year, how many you were.
Start whenever they.
Yeah.
You'd have to start at the beginning of the school year.
Sure.
Start at the beginning of the semester. You can start when you want. And, and I think it goes for eighteen months, but you could finish for that. It just kind of depends on how, how you want to organize. So.
I think I do have to start, like we interview them, they have to like start.
They have thirty days for when we accept them.
And then if you look at the additions and terminations, I just wanted to.
Well, before we go on to that, can I ask some questions on program attendance? So I have noticed our program attendance seems to fluctuate quite a bit. And I know we've done a lot of reorganizing with who's taking care of what programs and everything. I was hoping maybe moving forward, we could see some of what the programs are that are pulling in this attendance. So we can see which ones are really pulling in the largest groups of people.
That's, I, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what, what, what decision on a board level that kind of information is driving.
Well, cause if we're looking at different budget items and we're looking at which departments are getting what budget to do certain kinds of programs. I know we've recently.
We don't budget at that level though.
We budget it. We look at different departments and what they're getting to do their programming.
But we don't decide what that programming is.
No, we don't decide what the programming is, but we can see what's bringing in a lot of people. So if we see that there are certain programs that are not getting a certain amount of money, but they're bringing in a lot of people, do we want to start thinking about reallocating or do we want to start thinking about moving more people there?
But that moving of people is Gosselin's job. That's not our job.
So we can't see who's going to what program?
But we can, but I'm just trying to figure out, it's like, what policy budgetary decision is that driving? Cause our budget line is programs.
Right. But if we're looking at which programs fall into anti-racism, I'd like to know which people are going to those programs.
But we don't, we don't budget like that. We don't budget for anti-racism programs. We don't budget for that. We budget.
Then we just put money into anti, an anti-racism line item in the budget?
But the, is there, there's not programming as part of.
It could be. It's that. Training. It's a lot of different things. It's not just for random. And yes, we did. And where we didn't have it before, is, is that what you wanted to know?
Well, I, I'm wanting to know if we're seeing, you know, thirty-five hundred people in March and seventeen hundred people in June. Was there one specific thing that happened in March that increased our program attendance? Was it that there were more programs? Was it that we had the book bike out? Was it because we had the fifty years of hip hop so that we know what programs are bringing people in? No, I don't want to micromanage the money, but I do want to know what people are coming to see what programs.
How about this? May I recommend this? And I think it would be great for us too. So we almost have the whole year done. If we give something in January to kind of track exactly what you're talking about, and that would be helpful for us to see too. Like what is the, what was the hot stuff in March? And should we do more of that? I think that's, would that be something that would be?
Yeah, that, I think that would be fine. I just, if we're seeing things move this much from month to month, that tells me that there's a specific program or a specific thing that happened that maybe had larger attendance. And I'd like to know what that is.
Offer some. So fluctuations depend on a lot of things. It can depend on the number of programs. It can depend on the season. It can depend. In this case, October or September, we had over a hundred programs. So there were a lot of programs that got ten to twenty people. And then we had some big draws. We had several author visits. We have the folk music, which always packs the place. We had a parenting program that drew a hundred and thirty people. The Latin programs and their plans were high draw. So it was a gamut of things, but I worry about looking just at participants because that isn't necessarily a indicator of impact, you know?
I don't think it's an indicator of impact, but I do want to see. No, when I, when you say something like a parenting event, I'm very comfortable with a library. I would probably come to that.
Yeah.
But for other people, maybe they need something more entry level. And are we doing those things that then eventually gets them to go to those kinds of events? So I don't, I don't want to assign value of like only ten people went to this. So it wasn't, I, that's not what I'm looking at. I, I want to see what are the things that are drawing people in. I'd love to see what are the things that are drawing new people in, but I don't, I don't know that we have that kind of granularity. Or that I think we could make a pretty good guess. Have those kinds of things, like what's drawing in new folks to come in. But I'd like to see like, are there specific things that we have that have a big draw? Do we want to leverage those to get people to go to the other events where they may not be going, you know, naturally? So I just, when I see these big swings to me, it, it says like, did we have more things? Was it? Cause I look at the summer and I'm like, well, so it wasn't the book bike. Cause March is like two feet of snow. So like, that wasn't it. But you know, was there something specific that we did? Was it something? You know, was it that we launched a new program or that, you know, I, I would like to know what it is to know what's bringing people in, especially post-COVID. We know that we're seeing drastically different reactions to in-person programs and what people are engaging with and who's coming to the library. I just, I would like a an understanding of, of who's coming in.
And I think that, that it wouldn't be hard for us to do in terms of identifying the trends for the month. Like we can say, we, all of the staff populate a spreadsheet with their attendance. They do reflections about their programs. So we have all the data. So I, I think that it's what I'm hearing you say, you just want more of the story around the numbers. Cause they are, they do swing. It's not like a study. It's up and down and same with outreach numbers. It can be related to book bike visits. Sometimes it's just related to a big event and so it doesn't help.
And if there is like one big event and that, you know, everything else would have been leveled. Except for this one, I want to know that so that we know, you know, the attendance for these outreach things is consistent. And then there was this other thing, you know, just so that, like you said, so I understand the story behind the numbers and, and how we're reaching out to the.
That's pretty close enough.
So we'll do that.
Like paints a better picture. Like the other metrics, they're a lot more like black and white, it feels like. And, and that one is a little more like, what's going on here?
Sure. Okay.
Think one is kind of an artificial structure. I mean, not anytime it's an artificial structure, but having it by months, you know, that doesn't tell us like.
Right.
Whereas school, it ends in the middle of a month. That could shift it. You know, we can't repeat the fifty years of hip hop every year.
Exactly.
Helpless Taylor.
I'm telling you, if you guys want me to write a letter, you'll perform on the roof. I'll, I'll take one for this evening. Write that in.
Glad to. Give some more story behind the numbers. Thank you, Karen. And additions and terminations, I just want to, one thing I want to highlight was the recent, the long service that we had for Jim. He's been here since nineteen ninety-six. Uh, for Jim. He's been here since nineteen ninety-six. Um, and so, um, just wanna shout him out for his twenty-seven years of service to the library. Yeah. And then one that's not on here, that's coming up in December is, um, Lori Phoebe will be retiring. Um, on December twenty-second. And so. I just tell you now, cause we don't usually, we perhaps will not meet in December. Um, and so, um, just thank her for her service too. How many years? Twenty?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one years of service to the library. So the call of grandchildren are calling that live in all different states. Um, she's definitely putting her time. I'm like, I've said before, I'm happy that she was here, um, when I came back and I got to work with her again. Um, and so I just, uh, it's not on there because it's not happening till December, but, um, just long as I mention it. Uh, cause we probably only have a meeting or so back after.
It'll be a sad day when I leave, but it's awesome. I'm looking, my husband's been retired for two months and it was not sustainable.
We'll move into financial reports. We have our. Financial report summaries. Any questions related to that?
Now, are we still getting our money on time?
As far as I know.
I'm just gonna keep asking.
If the county assessor doesn't being such a. Um, any, but any further questions regarding, uh, the report before we get to this, this first ones? Okay. Then. The. First minutes beginning on. Page thirty. And then continuing to page fifty-six. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Moved. Is there a second? And any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. It is approved. Uh, going into additional reports. I go.
Oh man, so we, we finally got our D ninety-seven rep, who is Venus Hurd Johnson, who's only one rep. Because they have a lot of committees apparently. Uh, so then we did, um, the nominations. And Marion Almiron is chair and I am vice chair. Um, and then we're on the event planning committee for the, um, mental health. Event that we're doing, it's, we're pushing that a little bit later. We have, the committee hasn't met yet, so we don't know the exact date. Um, where we're gonna be kind of doing a public event that's participatory, that's not just being talked at. That has like breakouts where people can kind of learn what the different, um, governing bodies have in terms of mental health support in Oak Park. And also can give feedback on things where the gaps are and where they need, um, different services. And, and how they can be, um, met by the different government bodies. And that event committee is, um, Venus Hurd Johnson. Uh, Brian Straw and me. Uh, we are reviewing all of the kind of. How IGO formed, what its intent was and what we want it to do now, what kind of potential. And then doing a longer term plan about meeting that potential. Everybody's kind of over taxed. Um, time wise on the, on the committee, but, um, so we're not gonna try and turn everything over immediately. But we're gonna have a plan and, and set out a plan and kind of just review, um, how things have been done in the past and how they can be done better. And that's the, that's the main just to, none we do the round the table, but then.
Thank you. Karen did not meet since last month. Uh, let it green.
Um, we did not meet since the last, uh, four meetings. I'm, I'm correct now.
All right, friends. Then we will go into unfinished business. Uh, first item is our library budget. Our, our draft. Yeah, before you use draft three, um, of our, of our budget for, uh, for your action this evening. And hopefully that action is approval. Um, but are there any questions about the, about the draft of the budget?
Um, I, one thing I'll say to you looking is, I know one of the requests that you all had was talking points. And so, um, thank you, Billy. We, we kind of talked about it and Billy actually crafted some on there. So if you see it right before the budget.
That's fifty-seven.
Yeah, that's for you to use if someone, it's just a quick and dirty, like if you wanna pull it out. And then also we thought it'd be great if it's captured in the board packet. So if anybody was looking at this, if, if they didn't read the whole budget immediately, they would know. Like how much we're asking for, why, what's the rationale behind it? Um, so it's, it's for you, it's for the public, it's for us. Um, so we can talk about it too. Um, so I don't know if you wanna take some time to kind of lose that if you haven't had a chance.
Great, we appreciate that. Yeah, and the, the talking.
Yeah, thank you. And just a, a few notes about the draft three of the budget. Um, on the revenue side, it's exactly the same as what we saw last month in draft two. On the expenses side, we made a few tweaks and adjustments here and there. Overall operating expenses from, from draft two to draft three, operating expenses went up point two percent. So like, so it's just slightly, but it's to reflect, um, you know, uh, making sure that we have enough funds to cover. The, um, sort of justice conference and a few other, a few other, just a few other tweaks that, you know, we wanted to make sure we got in the budget before, before it was approved. All right, tables open. Questions, folks?
Sorry, I'm reading the talking.
If you have anything to add to the talking points too, and, uh, thank you for, Jody, for kind of crafting these two, um, to help us with the conversation. Um, just something to remember, the library's total percentage of our, our property tax bill is about five percent. So that's something else to keep in mind. If people, you know, look at sideways or think we're doing something that's too much, we're about five percent of the. Total, um, property tax bill. Um, most of our library budget is invested in people, salaries and benefits. And that's something that is, you know, we, we have to stay competitive. Benefits always go up. So then that's something we have to keep in mind as well. Uh, our utilities, insurance, construction, all sorts of things that we have to look at that continue to go up that we can't control. Also, this building is twenty years old. Our branches are older. Uh, it's time to look at keeping us competitive and keeping this building fresh. And keeping all the locations fresh too. That's another reason, um, for the budget decrease. And then, um. Yeah, those are, it was just some more, just to, you know, move the thought if people ask, if there's questions that I would like, I wanted to share too. For reporting. So people keep those things in mind too, so.
Um, within talking points, um, about four, five years ago, and then there was a, a group that was concerned about the constant property tax going up. Uh, there was a lot of talk about consolidating resources and resources. So why can't we have one HR person who can be part of all of the village entities? This kind of stuff. And I still hear that sometimes from people. Okay, are we just, do we have too many bureaucracies? And, um, I of course don't agree with that position. But in a talking point, um, what is the answer? I mean, I think the answer is you get a quality product because we've got. A quality group of people who are working.
Well, I would say to our instructor, I, you probably don't see for that, cause we wouldn't, we're not like a village.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to create an IGA for every shared resource. That would have to be specifically laid out, can it be a contract of services between it? And this, and I do not accept the notion that. A combined HR department across. No, no, and that's the one that's always brought up. And that's like usually the first one that people bring in. That a combined HR between the village, the park district, the township and the library, cause the school is a whole other thing with. You know, professional certifications. That you would not have to add additional staff. Like, like the number of people that would have to be in that combined department, if it's set in the Luch Hall, would not be an equitable headcount. To the individual people because a singular HR person can only handle so many employees. It is, it, it would be non, not, it would not be efficient. It would not be beneficial. So like, I, I get the talking point, but at some point you, like, there, people have to accept that. You can't just keep dumping more work on people and get the same quality results. It just doesn't work that way. We've seen it not work that way in business and it doesn't work that way in government. Uh, despite people's libertarian dreams that it does. Um, so yes, I, I've heard it too. It's not going away.
And I just wanted to, to, to raise that, um, as.
And I would say that, another point to bring up and to say is like, we did have a shared service. We had like a, a shared payroll, um, system with the village for many, many years. And the village decided one day that they just didn't wanna have our part of the, on their system. And gave us no notice to kick us out. And we had to then acquire software. And all the services and everything, licenses and incur additional costs. And still haven't, the villagers never gotten an, given an answer to us. But we've asked, what was their savings? So we could compare it against our savings to see if it was an actual savings to the taxpayers. So it's like, if the village wants to talk about that, and specifically, cause it's always from village hall. You know, it's not the park district or anybody else who's talking about, it's always like, well, we can do it cheaper. They were doing it. And they decided they didn't want to because they want their numbers to look better. And so they kicked us out. And when they were trying to manage our, and this is not just for you Ted, this is for everyone. And when people, and when they quote managed our parking garage, for those who were here at that time. Like they were apparently running it out of deficit. And like, and they turned over a bill to us and they could never explain why it was running out of deficit. Within two months, our staff in here, who had never run a parking garage, who had never managed parking equipment. Was bringing in more revenue than we were spending. Once we did the initial purchase of equipment. So it's like, they like to talk about it. But I have never seen them demonstrate financially on a tip, on a document that says, we actually can do it. So I, I appreciate it. And I was just like, Bill, Village Hall is, I, I would, I think our staff would love to let Village Hall do our payroll. Processing again, you know, so that, no, no. No one knows the needs of our employees. It's like, if it was something that we could offload in terms of.
I feel like it's just the specialization of like knowing your staff and like having their relationship.
Had HR people in hand, but it was just like the processing of the payments was done through Villatral. It was like, we, we submitted the numbers and they processed. The checks out. And then one day they said, well, we're not gonna do that anymore. And you guys have to figure out how the money gets to your employees. Um, so it was, it, that, that's what my understanding of it was at the time. That's how generally they get explained it. But again, it's like, we've had these opportunities and when they, when it would be have shared resources and management, I will just say. The folks at Village Hall have, have never demonstrated to me. That collaborative, shared thing being run out of Village Hall has been to the benefit of Oak Park.
I, I think, wh- when I think about, and I, I have not been here as a trustee under any sort of. Hearing of, of resources like that, but when I, like, when I'm looking at our four pillars and I'm looking at anti-racism equity. Being the let, like, that's not just about the programming and the things we do with the community. That's ingrained in what our leadership and what our HR and what our finances like. That is what we do. If we turn that over to a centralized governing body, we have to understand that we will then have to combine with whatever their priorities are. And I would not particularly like to do that. I, I like the priorities that we have set out. I like the way that our staff is carrying those forward. I like that we can be an example of these things being priorities to our staff. And still being successful, still being profitable, still being all the things that we need to be as a governing body, as a taxing body. But while still holding on to these values. I think if we start combining resources with folks who do not have our values in mind. Necessarily, or haven't codified them in this way, then we risk losing some of the impact that we're able to make for our teams and internally. And in turn, that will impact how we can, you know, impact the community with these same ideas. So, um, I am always all for saving money, but I feel like there would be six of one, half dozen the other, just to have a lot of people sit in another building. Uh, a mile away. Um, and that we would lose some of the, the autonomy that we have to make the moves that we've decided to make. And have the priorities that we've decided to have and, and have those come to fruition in every aspect of, of what we do as a library.
I would also ask a question if, if you're talking about people in the public who are making the statement. And I know that there are, it would be to ask them the question, you know, like, why do you think that that would be beneficial? And, cause they may not be thinking of govern, they may be thinking of government as just this kind of big entity, one thing. And not really paying attention to the differences at each place.
I think a lot of people think that if the line item on the tax bill disappears, the dollars disappear. Just mentally disappear and don't have to get spent somewhere else.
Right, but I'm just saying that, that it's, you know, it also is a, a way to turn around the thinking about how we think about government. And why do we think that government is this modelist? You know, we're not thinking closely enough about government. If we're not seeing that HR at a library would have to be very different than HR. At the village or the township school or, or a school or whatever like that. Of course it would have to be different. They're different. They do different work. They have, I mean, with the different culture and it's different relationship based. Uh, everything is different.
The postcard structure is different too. Like some libraries, like, you know, like on the east coast, it's a county system. So you do share, like you, you shares. You don't share everything, but some stuff it is in like, it might be facilities. So the county might do all your facilities, including the library. So maybe they're thinking of libraries they experienced that way too. So it might be coming from that. And then they do look at it and they think, oh, well, aren't you all the same? How come we can't do that? And I would also offer too, to that question, we do, we are very thoughtful about when we have openings and like how we think about it. Like look at Billy, Billy is consolidating. He's, he's consolidation personified. He has now HR and finance. So we do, we do think of the bottom line of what we do. We, Elizabeth retired. We did not replace her position. We bought Matt and Machine up to the table. And we were able to do promotions. We were able to, um, save money and do things like that. So we, we are cognizant of the top level seats too and try to, um, make it as efficient. And you know, like a smooth operation and not be top heavy and all that too. So that's something else to offer that we, we do think about that when we think about. You know, cause that's probably, that, I feel like that's what people are saying. Like are you being redundant at the top? Can you get that from somewhere else? So you can also offer internally. We, we, we are cognizant of that. And we try to, you know, think, is, is there a rule for us to do something different? If we have a vacancy or something coming up, can we, is there a way to consolidate? Is there a way to pull someone up? Um, you know, or think about things differently, so.
Thank you for the conversation. That's exactly what I, what I wanted because one of the jobs, the, is to promote. The library to the community and we have to. Is to promote the library to the community and we have to have good answers, and I think we have.
I know, I was thinking about the talking points and like how all of us probably have a different take on what we emphasize or. How we talk about it, um and it is interesting, I mean, I I think about that and I'm like, I don't think we'd actually see a savings. If we can, like, that would be my pushback immediately, it's just like. I don't think that would save us any money, it'd be a drop in the bucket and make things harder for everyone. Um but like, I think the one talking point that I also opened began is like, I've been looking into like the different. Groups that are upping the costs and that it just feels like such corporate greed, so that's like one of my talking points is talking about like how. Not just inflation, like some of these are really. Taking advantage of libraries and and subscription services and like you can't. When you're offering a service, you can't take it away the next year, so then you're like doomed to continue to raise prices, but I do think that's. If the audience is right, it might be a good one to.
There was a good book drive article about that.
You know, I think I thought, I think that's what maybe, because I know it came up in last month's discussion or two months, but then I'll go with that article.
So, you know, especially during COVID, it went up and they 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 like it. So we got to keep at that rate of that cost.
That's another one of the principles that we have is. You know, there are a lot of things that we as the library have not done in the community because we could not guarantee that we could do it without a cost. Out of pocket to people, so thi- this is the cost. This is, this is it. There is nothing more. This gets you everything that we can possibly give. To you and your family, and we will not be coming back asking for dues or fees or anything else to. Attend programs or get specific materials or.
We are not a pay to play.
We're not, we're we're all play, yeah, we're all play, all play.
I think it's, yeah, it it's it's really tricky, it's it's always. People want us to do more, they want government in general to do more, but not cost more. They want the things that they, I I think back to the city of Chicago, talking of everyone at the budget cut. And when they said, yeah, we're gonna, okay, we'll we'll start cutting unnecessary. You know, not essential ser, you know, services and things and public entertainment events. So we're gonna skip, we're gonna cut back on the Fourth of July fireworks and everybody lost their minds. They're like, wouldn't that, that one? Like, not the one that is like one of the biggest line items for the city.
Yeah, so that would be a good way, I think the response too, is just like, what do you like at the library? What do you attend? And you know, they offer X, Y, Z. Because I think once you attend things, I mean, we went to the event last week and like me and Tristan both were just like. The best free date, I mean, we had to like go in and out, but like it really was, it felt like we could have done that at a bar and paid a lot of money to attend, and so. It just, I mean, I think it is also just making sure people take advantage of what is in front of them.
I've actually seen them at a bar and it was a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would, I would pay like a ticket and drinks to attend, but I mean, it's really nice to get at the library, so.
So it means that it's successful.
So let's bring it back to the budget lines.
Thank you for talking.
I mean, I think, you know, it is important because we do have to to look at what the community is asking for and what the concerns are. And. You know, if if we were a larger percentage of. The budget, I would have more concerns. Because I don't want to to contribute to our being affordable. But at the same time, we are in this time when. Libraries are. Being required to pay increasing fees. And we have to meet the times we're in.
I also just, like, anytime I hear the unaffordability, like, I just, the library is not the reason the community is unaffordable. And like, at a time when inequality is so high, we need our libraries whenever, so like, that's kind of been my. Refrain of just like, this is not the time to cut a library.
Ted keeps mentioning the the dollar amount at the bottom, maybe we should do that for programs too, you could pay twenty five dollars plus a gin and tonic. This was a two hundred dollar. Um I did have a question about social services, Jeff. What does that cover under programming? Because I saw it went from five to ten, I think I know what it is, but I just want to make sure I actually know what it is. Rob's programs sixty.
So I I think we talked about, like, we adjusted it over time, didn't we, Billy, from talking about?
No, we, I mean, we went from twenty thousand to ten thousand, I can't remember. Because he was um gonna start doing other, like, a lot of the intake. That he was able to do in-house and not have to spend as much.
The actual was five and the budget for next year is ten.
Exactly.
So I'm just making sure we're. We're accounting for doing things, but this is because.
From the actual, it's gonna be an increase from the actual of this year. They way, he way over budgeted and requested his budget for for this year. Based off the thinking that he was gonna rely more on outside service, but since he's done a lot of it internally, he has saved that money.
And then the increase is expansion. Something else he said too, because I asked this question.
Yeah, there was, there was another, there was another service that he was engaging with, but it was not gonna be. Um I I don't remember the detail, but that's what it was, was like. It's, yeah, it's.
All those partnerships have enabled him not to really use, have to use this budget as much, but then the ten brings it up, so it's covered, he has something, but he doesn't need twenty. I just actually.
I spent numbers moving too much in it. I I thought that.
In weird ways, it's like, yeah, because it was like, it was way underspent and it was, it the budget was coming down, so yeah, it's like. No, but yeah, that's what the, that's what our conversation was last one, yeah.
So not, not cutting any services, not changing any services, we're expecting an expansion there.
What he actually uses. Like I said, Rob had the, was like, I got some change, if I need some change, he just able to give other department somebody, because he just.
Because at one time he, we did need that, it was like two or three years ago, we did need that, but then we just have, we didn't correct for it last, last year. And I think some things changed, and so like, we're we're counting for it now. It's it's a lot, it's more aligned with the actual of what, like a more.
And he found a way to say.
Any other? Questions or comments regarding?
Which were the areas where you increased, you said?
Oh, um I know that made very many adjustments. There were. Martine, what was it? I think we made it, we made it on the equipment and supplies on page one.
Is that the sixty technology projects equipment?
Um it's on page sixty, and it's under digital services, about the middle of the page, digital services about halfway down. You'll see equipment and supplies. We added, I think we added five thousand dollars there, I mean, Martine, remember, I think we added five thousand there. Um and then on, and then under capital expenses. If you like, just go a little further down, so capital expenses, technology projects and equipment, that one. Um I think we originally had like twenty thousand that we're gonna spend and and. And I think he was even commenting at the last board meeting, like, are you sure you don't need more money for this stuff? And then Martine, you know, meeting was like, that's pretty more money, just in case, you know, if. If we don't spend it, at least at least of the budget, but like, um we think the fifty thousand dollars is a better place for for that. For the technology equipment, so it's like, it's adjustments like that, like just kind of more, just the fine tuning.
And that's, that's dropping because the creative studio is complete.
Yeah, so there's no major projects planned, um no major.
And because it's ending up over the year, I don't know what happened, uh like, you know, head price into like value for two, three months. Uh that's why.
What? No crystal ball?
Yeah, and actually, as Martine's speaking, that's, I think that's another thing we should call out and talk about is the subscription and services line, in digital services, subscription services line. Um it's, it's going up forty one point seven percent, I mean, that's, and we talk about feeling like we're being, you know, targeted for, you know. Yeah, that's, that's where we target for increases, that's, that's what we're experiencing in all of our annual subscriptions.
We usually do it for like two years uh subscription, because we can save a lot, twenty percent when you do two years subscription, that's why next year we'll be capturing another.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, like, are we locking in this price for a certain number of years so that we can?
Sometimes there's a lot of, like, every year, but sometimes uh required improvement.
Oh, they require a full three-year payment upfront, so we get the twenty percent. Off over the three years, but we have to put everything.
Push like year by year license, we can save.
Yeah, so that's.
So mean the little libraries, so.
But I mean, this is the thing that we talked about before is, especially when we were looking at the, you know, the usage reports and we're seeing like. Digital usage is not coming down. They know that, they know that we can't, I mean, I'm in the middle of four audio books right now.
All these subscription services like are public private basically entities, so like they know what they're doing. Just um now they're subsidized by the government, I guess, but that's fine.
Well, they have it, you know, they they, you know, these publishers always knew how to. You know, one, once the the digital stuff started to, you know, picking up and. You know, they needed to figure out a way to make up for as much, where the physical copies weren't breaking down as often. You know, it didn't have to be replaced with all that, it's, they have shareholders and they're gonna do what they're gonna do to make their shareholders happy. And they're, so. Now it's, now they're excusing it just.
And they can. That's surprising, just the point.
Maybe mouse will be public domain next year.
The mouse don't give round. Oh, find a way.
And then Suzanne, going back to your your question, like one other line, the other, the other line I know that I changed is um on page fifty eight. In the compensation section, I did do a um a slight adjustment to the I M R F line, to get a little more buffer, I think it was like two oh eight. Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that there's, you know, uh enough to have.
You said before that we're expecting a fifteen percent increase on those.
That's, that's, fifteen percent is correct on workers' compensation and uh our other um insurances for the library. The, the, for I M R F, the pension plan, uh our contribution is going up. We don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but like two point something percent to three point something per percent, I know what that's going to be. Um but that number is a factor of wages and salaries and stuff, increase wages and salaries. That as well, but I just, I just added a little bit of a buffer to make sure that we remain within the budget. So again, minor adjustments, all of those adjustments totaled up, uh it's about point two percent uh increase. In operating from draft two to draft three.
The other happy thing though is because people use us so much, as we saw in the course statistics. A lot of libraries aren't having this conversation, it's still like, how can we get people back after the pandemic? How can we get people to use it? So having the need to, having this actual need to make sure we keep up with our pace is actually really great. So um that's another positive to share, because we could be saying, you know, well, there's users. Like, you know, but even from circulation to the digital stuff, to the computer use, many libraries are seeing everything go down. And just about all of our, like we saw in the course statistics, are either steady or going up for the most part, so. Um that's, that's really happy news for all of us.
With that, is there a motion to approve the budget? Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to the staff for listening to all of our asks and our repeated questions and our bad math and. All of the things that we do every year at budget season. Thank you very much for working so hard to get us draft after draft after draft. So that we can be confident when we go back out to the community and explain exactly what they're gonna be able to get and exactly what we're doing here, so thank you.
And this is Billy and um let us first for a way, like, on their own, to do it, so they did a great job.
After, I think I need to add a roll call vote. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was gonna roll, roll, roll back a measure, um. I think we need, we need a specific motion to page sixty, to the doc, to the resolution on the, on page sixty one. Um is there um Ted, and I believe it was Christina? Um does your motion in second reflect to the resolution on page sixty one?
It does, that's exactly what I wanted to do.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh will the secretary please take the roll call? I go last.
You go last?
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Bloom?
Yes.
Trustee Fairfax, yes. Uh trustee Faust?
Yes.
Trustee Gunwood?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yeah.
Trustee first.
Yes. Uh and that is, we have one, one absent, and that is approved. Thank you all, thank you staff. And then we have on page sixty two. The resolution for setting forth the, which I believe this is the levy. Um it's the, it's actually the um. Like Suzanne verifying that the, that the resolution is actually true and valid, it's, it's like a, it's like a check on. Okay. So no, no, it's, 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 there's no additional vote needed, it's just, it's not like the same, the same. So we, we have approved the levy, but we should still have a vote on the actual approving budget documents. As it is laid out, um pages um fifty eight. Through sixty. Um because we, we, we approved the resolution for the levy, but we do need to also approve the. Budget document, it's, 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 there's always two votes. Um usually the, because we, we need to approve how much we're gonna take in, and then the, then the budget load is how we're gonna spend it.
I will move to.
Approve the budget?
The budget.
Same by Maya, any further discussion, hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay, any extensions, it is approved.
So we don't need a roll call on that?
No.
And Matt, my understanding is we don't need a roll call on that because that's an internal product.
That's why we need the roll call and now we can spend it.
Yeah.
As, as we wish.
Okay.
So. Billy, you're gonna make copies to sign before me?
Yeah, we'll be not, just send that to sign.
So don't run out.
All right. So, and then A B to treat your plan and logic line.
Okay, so as promised, this is um our final draft. With the outcomes included, if you recall, uh back in August we met. Uh we came um with what we had from the outcome from the August meeting to start, um. And then this last piece we have to, we, the last time we had the um statements. And now we have the outcomes on there, and so what we, what you won't see, and we'll outline other goals. And the specific things that we actually do, if we put it on here, this thing would be like as long as this room, I think. But that, so we've been working on that as a team, of the actual actions, but these are the outcomes. And this is, you know, this is typical what you saw like last year or over the past, so this is, um this is like a couple step.
I know everything in the anti racism column is new, but were there any major significant changes that we've made to the other pillars?
That, no, not really, I think the change you'll see more is in how they, how they um execute the outcomes. And that's what we've really been focused on, um we've been talking about this group, Mallory came in and our, one of our last two. Um leadership team meetings that walked us through, uh I think I shared that last time, just to kind of get us to. Get the gears rolling up, okay, so what are we gonna do differently for twenty twenty four? How are we going to support these strategic priorities? This time, so that's what we've been focused on, so that's the difference. Um what I love about this is you don't have to change it that much, all the places I work, I wish I had this. Because you don't have to, you know, start on scratch anytime, the core values, like your core values, your, your priorities pretty much, you know, are what they are. You tweak it a little, but then you change your, how you, how you execute what you say in your organization. How you execute what you say in your organization. And we did do a good tweet this time, because the equity and anti-racism, which is all, so, um, thank you for that.
Okay.
And then, uh, it's, this is listed as a discussion item for now. Um, and then we can put it as an action item for next month for approval.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna respect me to, I mean, obviously not here because of the aforementioned role of paper, but. Are we gonna hear about the goals that are going into this as part of the discussion to approve, or are we approving? This just off of, okay.
Yeah.
Just wanting to know if I'm expecting any more words to read.
No, 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 yeah, the, the goals is what will fluctuate from month to month in that report we get. From staff based off, again, like the, kind of the, the cycle throughout the year.
Good deal.
As those things happen, so this is, this is the board, this is the board bill.
Or level of.
Uh, decision.
Yeah.
So I have a question on this, where it says, we create and implement library policies that promote equitable outcomes for our staff and the public. Is this we? The board staff?
It's the staff.
It's staff, yeah. So I was asking about that because last time we were talking about the idea that board sets the policies and staff does the procedures.
But we, we, we pulled the policies together and we presented for you to approve. And so, and then, um, so like the anti-racism policy, for instance, that we had last month. Then we'll have some, I've been, I've been talking to Stephen and we, we have the plan to roll that out to frame. The staff on like, what does that mean? Have you implemented? So that's the, the we.
Okay.
On ours.
Okay, so I was just trying to understand based on the, you know, the last oppositions about the difference. Policy and procedure.
We create, implement, you approve, and tell us like, huh, and they will edit it from there. Like the anti-bullying will come up soon.
Gotcha.
Any further feedback for staff?
Uh, this is just such a useful document because. Um, I, I was, I had mentioned in an earlier board meeting that several years ago. We had thought about a Cuban initiative with the public library. And in speaking to Jocelyn, she said, okay, where does that fit into our strategic plan? And I looked at this and I thought it doesn't seem to. And it was just really very helpful, and then I thought, well, why doesn't it? And it really helped me to, to think things through.
And that's what we'll do the whole year, and we've talked about that on the issue team, like that helps us. Hold in, because there's so many things, we wanna do all the things. I, I know I'm guilty of it, but then, like, I have to ask myself that question, like, would this fit in? If it doesn't fit in. We don't have to ride all the rides, we don't have to do all the things. We do so much as it is, that this, to your point, it helps us focus and really. Um, have outcomes and goals. And we, that we can point to at the end of the year and say, okay. We have a game plan and we did, we just went all over the place. We had a, we were very intentional about why we do what we did. From the staff side to the public side, so thank you for saying that.
I really like the, the whole second section on this one. Um, you know, we had the priorities, relationship building. Um, meaningful collaboration before, but um, the way it's kind of spelling it out and has, um. You know, increased and sustained opportunities for internal collaboration versus relationship building. I just love saying relationship building in there. Multiple times, um, and increased awareness of and knowledge about restorative practices. Among library and community peers and stakeholders, I'm really a fan of.
Great.
Of those pieces and making sure that we elevate them.
Okay, and if there's any edits or, it's just, you know, like last time, is that, yeah.
Yeah, send me the Gelson. Alright. Our last item. The agenda is the revised anti-bullying policy.
So, um, we've had, what was the discussion last time? And so, um, based on that discussion. It's, we, we don't have the marks of one that we usually have.
Yeah.
What has changed is, um, the last paragraph mostly, and so. What it gets at the heart of is, I think it's a good compromise from what we're both talking about. It's not that we don't wanna use it, but we. Uh, we've talked about this a little bit too, we have to be able to. Apply as necessary, and I did a little research myself, just kind of just refreshing my. Uh, understanding about what restorative justice is, and one key thing that we did talk about last time is all parties have to agree. So we can't just say, you know what, the first thing we're gonna do, you're gonna do restorative justice. Because if you, if you really think about it, that's not restorative at all, and you're just like, okay, that's what we're gonna do. Both parties have to agree, so that language is in there in the last paragraph, and we included it, um. To say it will be considered when we have a situation, when we're talking about, it will be included as a possible. Approach, including progressive discipline. I think you heard the feedback last time to say. The progressive discipline, like what, to actually say that? And so that is what we changed based on the feedback and the conversation that we had last time. Um, everything else at the top is the same. Um, so I was just curious to hear what you all think about that.
I think it's good, I think it's about the things that we were discussing in a matter of minutes here, um. But I did see her point of view, and I think this does resolve it, so thanks.
And I think as long, you know, provided. This with the, you know, increased awareness of and knowledge about restorative practices. And really highlighting that and, um, practicing it. Then hopefully that will address. My concerns on the issues around that.
Sure.
Um, I think, you know, the thing that's important is always to understand where the. Where the power is in situations, and, um. Yeah. And I think that, I think having only if all parties agree is a good hypothetical there.
I have a little bit of a question, because this. Feels like in some ways it can overlap with some of the harassment and anti-racism policies that we've. Already approved. Do we have a? Method, I guess I should swivel this way and ask though, do we have a method to sort of parse between? When something falls in harassment versus bullying versus. Uh, cause they, they feel like they can get very conflated very easily.
Yeah.
Um, and so adding what now feels like the third. In a series of, of similarly related items, do we have a plan for? How we're differentiating between.
Yeah.
Or rather, I know that Billy has a plan, I would like to know.
Uh, here, but here's what, here's what I know about what you're, what you're saying. So we've had the equity and anti-racism policy for about a month. Uh, and we're adding a, uh, hopefully adding a, uh, anti-bullying policy to this. We had the, um. Non-discrimination, anti-arrestment policy, and then there, you know, it's a staple in our, uh, women policy. But what I would say is, I might have like a guess as to like, if someone brings a complaint forward, I might have a guess as which policy it might. Might apply mostly to it, but I'll complete the investigation, or we'll complete the investigation. And then see which policy best fits, it may be multiple, it may just be one, um, which, which way is, which way does it skew and, um. But the, but the, the investigation that we would do, um. Would be similar under all three policies, it's just in the. Equity and anti-racism policy, we spelled out what that investigation looks like. Here, we've said it'll be investigated thoroughly, which.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, this goes back to the. Policy versus procedure, there is, there's a process that you follow in all of these similar instances. And that just, that gets distilled down to which of these policies did this.
Yeah, yeah, this is gonna be a new problem for, for us, cause I mean, we haven't had these, um, uh, policies to date, and so. Um, now that we do, now, yeah, like vessel, uh, you know, talking to an attorney, I feel like that's, like, we do the investigation. We look at all applicable policies and which ones might, might, um, have a say in here, and then which one, which. Which, um, which policy is it, um. Perhaps in violation of which one do we have to go to for the corrective action?
And I wouldn't phrase it as a problem, it's like, it gives us a. It gives us a, a perfect, a problem, it gives us a template, so we're not, so then we're not all over the place, the, the, the staff understands the implications. Uh, what the, um, consequences are, what their approaches are to addressing it, and so it's clear.
Well, and then, yeah. That's part of my question is, you know, if I, if, if Billy calls me and, and says, you know, we have a. Our harassment issue, or we have a bullying issue, and I go, no, I don't think so, I think you should look at this under. You know, harassment, because, you know, I feel like I have a better chance of not getting fired.
I'll describe the issue in factual terms and ask questions about, about the incident, and then we'll make the determination, um, as to which policy that, um.
Right, so the, the determination of which policy lives with you and me?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and ultimately with Jocelyn, yeah.
Okay, and.
But I would be advising, advising her, and I would say in conjunction with Stephen, especially if it's this, going over into the equity and anti-racism. Um, pieces, but some things potentially could be clearly, um, discrimination or harassment, clearly bullying. They could, they could have elements of that negative racism on there, these, these are conversations that we're gonna have to have.
I just, I, I wanna, first and foremost, I want us to, to think about that and also know that like. If these policies are public to, or are open, as they obviously will be to the staff. If there is a differentiation in, you know, the, the punishment or the, the outcome in one versus the other. Are they going to come to you and say, like, no, Billy, I don't think you should?
So, and that's another reason I think for saying, like, under all three policies having like.
Very similar.
Appropriate action will be taken, you know, it's like, and then, and then we get to decide, you know, and also with Jocelyn. The, what that appropriate action is for, for whatever the facts of the case outcomes are. And when I said problem, I, I appreciate you kind of stopping me on that, because it's a good problem to have. I'm happy to have these three policies. And then have, um, like, yeah, the, like, recovery from all, the issues of bullying, anti-hur, uh, or I'm sorry. Uh, harassment, discrimination, uh, racism, and equity from, it's like covered from all angles, right? And, and we're saying. You know, very clearly what we're going to expect, what we want to, and what we want to allow from employees.
I'm, I'm already having more tools in your belt to protect our employees, just wanted to make sure, I, I wanted to understand like. What is the process of differentiating between some of these things that can look to an individual very, very similar, so thank you for.
Yeah, the, the investigation will tell, like, the, the facts of the case for the investigation will tell us.
Have you talked to any of your peers who have these multiple policies? I'm just curious in terms of like how they. Interact, because that is.
I have not, I've actually never had that conversation, conversation, actually, I very, no, very, I mean, I don't know of any, um. Any libraries that have an equity, anti, equity and anti-racism policy as we do. Um, they may have an anti-bullying policy, and then they would be required by the state to have the harassment discrimination policy. So that's a, that's a conversation for the next, uh, HR roundtable, so.
Have, have you spoken with, um. Our attorney as to that these sufficiently protect the organization? As best we can?
I have not asked that specific question, but yeah, I mean, the, the non-discrimination and anti-grassment policy is written by, um, HR source attorneys. This policy, the anti-bullying policy is written by HR source attorneys, and, um. The, uh, we're going to extra stuff with our equity and anti-racism, uh, policy, and yeah, is, we are sufficiently covered on, um.
They have been, what's the, what's the extra stuff with the equity and anti-racism?
Yeah, um, that's not required by law to have that policy. Um, neither is the anti, anti-bullying policy, and so we're, we're going beyond what's expected, which is fully within our right to do, um.
Cause I'm, I'm just concerned as like, as to having, also having in some multiple directions as to. Is there additional liability we are opening ourselves up to by having possibly conflicting and overlapping? Stuff as an organization?
No, the one risk that we, the one risk that, the one from an attorney. Whenever reviewing the equity and anti-racism policy, the, the one risk that we run is because we're so specific. Um, in, in what our, uh, investigation will look like in there. Um, is that it's potentially could get called up for not doing steps, but, but are we okay with that? And, and to that, and to that note, it's not in front of me tonight, but to that. Um, it's why, uh, we added in, on, um, in front of each of those steps, like, uh, may include. So like to give us some leeway, like, so like if we missed it, if we didn't do one step, that provides them, you know, like.
Yeah.
It said it may include, it's a willing, so.
I shall.
Yeah. Which again is why we prefer the, um. You know, one, one sentence about appropriate correction, corrective action, rather than saying, here's all the stuff you're going to take.
Right.
I don't think they'll be confusing at all, I mean, the, you know, the investigation will tell the story, it gives us tools. And it makes it clear for everybody.
Absolutely. I mean, being able to be like, you know, we are opting to move forward with corrective action because of anti-bullying. Racist behavior and sexual discrimination. God, I hope that doesn't happen, but. It's, it does protect you that you did the full investigation, you have shown that this actually is a breach of three. Very specific policies that has been laid out, and that as an institution, we have made clear that we will not tolerate.
Yeah, and that takes us up, so, what's the word I'm over, like being subjective? Well, you're picking on me, and no, I don't think that's it, no.
Right.
Here are, it's not subjective, it's based on policy.
Right.
Whatever our approaches, um, whatever they be.
And it does ensure that, you know, it is a safe environment for all staff.
That's very important.
This is listed as an action item, is there a motion to approve? Um, any further discussion? Uh, I'll just say that I still think the inclusion of. This, uh, just one part of the progressive disciplinary action is duplicative and unnecessary, um.
Which part?
The, the, the inclusion of restorative justice. As, because it, it's called out as one part of a progressive disciplinary action. I, I think it's unnecessary. I think so, but.
But it, it also includes progressive disciplinary.
But it was included in the progressive disciplinary, so why did we pull that particular thing out and not written documentation of a dig? Of a, of a written write-up or kind of some kind of oral? Or anything else, why was that the particular thing that needed to get called out and not any other part of the progressive, um, disciplinary piece? It put, it puts, it puts. It puts emphasis on it that it says that's the expectation we want people to take instead of any other disciplinary in my mind.
But I think it more so speaks to that we are embodying an anti-racism institution and that.
And but it doesn't specify anti-racism there, so I'm, I, I'm not gonna debate it, I'm not gonna fight that it's.
Yeah.
But it's, it, I said it last month, but I don't think it needs to be there, because I think progressive disciplinary action up to and including termination. Includes restorative justice. And it didn't need to be pulled out specifically.
Would.
I'm not gonna ask for the staff to, to read, to go back on this. I'm just, I'm making a, a point that I think that pulling out specific steps. In, out of inclusive phrases to be highlighted is unnecessary and duplicative. I don't say that we don't need to have restorative justice, I'm saying that pulling specific things out of inclusive statements. In this particular point of a process is duplicative and unnecessary.
Shall we vote them?
Yeah. No other comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. It is approved. Uh, new business capital reserve process.
Okay.
So, um, we talked about this maybe. August, I, I was introducing the concept, so it's just, again, to further the discussion. Um, to talk about what it is, I did a little homework about, um, what, uh, what that, what has, I, I consulted our council. And so in a nutshell, so I don't get too lawyerly, um, in there, so what we do is, um. First off, we, we have to create a long-term capital, capital plan, and so we're working on that on our end. Um, I'm working with Matt and we're talking to like, uh, our former architects. That know our building and kind of walk with me, like what, you know, what needs updating, what are.
That's right.
We think what are things that we need to work on, um, so that's the first piece of it, so we, we're to work on that even without. Having a capital reserve fund necessarily is something that needs to be done, and so that's one tenet of it, that's the first piece of it. Um, from that, uh, we look at the statutory limits. Um, that are stated from Illinois law, I'm sure, of how much you can set to the side, uh, for the plans, and then. Usually you have to execute it within two years. Usually you have to execute it within two years, um so that's how you you don't go forever and have a daily fund. Like a church that never, you know, there's always the building fund for fifty years. Um I'm giving to the building fund, giving to the building fund, but there's also room to extend it if you need to. So say, you know, we need something that costs fifty million dollars, are we gonna get fifty million dollars in two years? No, not necessarily. So if we come to the two years and we're not there, like I can bring a resolution or something for you to vote on to say. Um can we make it for five years where we continue to put uh um some to the side for the um reserve funds?
But that would all be contingent on us having an actual plan of what what are these actual dollars?
Correct, because you have to justify, it seems like from that, from what I understand, you have to justify why you put it to the side and not spending, expending the tax dollars. It has to have like a plan to go with it, so it's not just, cuz you really aren't supposed to be hoarding funds, so to speak, but if you have poor reserves for capital, you can do that. Um so.
Does that, does that make sense?
I I I can't understand why I think according, the 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 appearance of according funds might not go over with them.
Right, so.
There's nothing going on down the street.
Exactly, and so so I'm just sharing this as a discussion item, just as for education. If that's something we wanna move towards, so we're all on the same page of like what that means, uh it's something to consider, we're talking about that and we're talking about. We've been talking about things we need to update, I you know, I get, I mentioned this building is that twenty years now, um and we're looking at the wear and tear. Of this building and other locations and we wanna save a five star library, we wanna stay. Um so we have things, so we don't wanna be the library, that used to be a nice library. That has to be what was nice in two thousand and two or three, is not gonna maintain twenty twenty, you know, twenty fifty. And we, you know, we still have these same tables, chairs, carpet, you know, so.
I know it would be out of date, but have we looked at the, not not decor, now have we looked at the master facilities? Plan or study that we did pre covid a million and four years ago? And taking that into consideration as well? Like I said, I I know it's not all gonna be relevant.
Right, but yeah, that's where we started and then, so now we have one that it'll bring it current because prices have changed. Um you know, C sub changed, priorities are changed, um a load or shifted maybe, and so um. Whether we do the reserve plan or not, I just, it's just something to consider and um. Uh when you all ask me like, what is that? So like I said, I just wanted to bring it back for discussion and say like, here's what it is, here's what that would mean. And it may be something considered for twenty twenty five budget, possibly. Uh uh something to say if we wanna do that um.
I I think it's the the responsible thing to do, I think. You know, as someone who used to walk through the building and I think a cylinder probably used to work the building at one point. It was never coined that the facility staff knew exactly where to place the garbage cans to catch the leaks in the Thompson Center. You know, whenever time it rained, they knew exactly, they knew exactly where to put those garbage cans to catch the water, that's not cute. I don't want that for this.
I think we also, it it's not just about the refresh, I think. Covid really changed and I we we just did all the statistics, it it's really changed how we're using. Our space and I think we felt that a little bit before covid, which is why we did the master facilities plan or study um. I think some of the points are still salient, that we're using the space differently and that. That's going to require some planning and some capital to make sure that we. Shift the community's living room to to fit the furniture, it needs to fit the community to come in.
Right. Right, like we are activating outdoor spaces, you know, there's opportunity to do that, um so. Yeah, that's a great point, it's not just refreshing, it's just, it's a rethinking, it's what, how can we use this building to reflect changes? So um it's hard, you can't just take it out the budget and be like, okay, it's three million, cuz we gotta pay salaries. Um I R F, um utilities, all those things, so putting some to the side. Or if something happens, something catastrophic happens, then we're not running into a deficit, we hopefully won't have to tap into. Our reserves as much if we have like a little nut to the side, where we can say, okay, no problem, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's a quarter million. It's three hundred thousand, well, you know, we have a million in capital reserves, we got it covered. Um and you know, that's just being a good steward of the taxpayer dollar, which is, you know, that's what we're always trying to do. So again, we have our budget done, but it's something to think about for twenty twenty five then. So that was it, that was the discussion, let's move on to something else.
I I'm in favor of it, I think, you know, it's, we we need to stay on top of it, I think as, you know, if nothing else we've learned this year. With the. The the chiller is up on top, you got you gotta stand on top of these things and. It's, you know, if best practices change from maintenance to usage to. You know, what is technology available, so you know, yeah.
And there'll be some good transparency for the community as well, especially as we're talking about dollars and where they're going. We do have big financial budgets for them to see, this is what we've been putting away for. This is, you know, this is what we're going to try to do, this is how it will manifest as something beneficial to the community once.
Responsible planning, it's, you know, it's, you gotta be, you gotta be forward thinking, you cannot be just reactionary with this stuff. Cuz it it'll just get more, it'll be more expensive if all you do is react.
It's hard to defend that, oh, sorry, I need some more, we didn't plan, I I don't want us to have that conversation, you know, you know, it'd be better if we.
We're ready for it. Thank you. Um and before we adjourn, I just wanna put it out there that um, you know, as we. Next month, there'll be two items I wanna make sure we have on there, um cancellation of the December meeting um as an action item. Um cuz we've passed our budget, there'll be a few cleanup things, um you know, this approval, a few other stuff. Um and also uh both. For our bylaws, I believe we do our review of the executive director starting in January. Um and if we're not meeting in December, I do want to share the existing um evaluation rubric. Uh with the board in um November to look at, to see if we wanna make any revisions to it. I honestly, thinking back, I can't recall the last time it was revised. I think it was the rubric that.
We talked about it once.
Oh, we've talked about it several times. We we always talk about it, like when we give it out and we say this, this doesn't, isn't like the greatest tool. We should change it and then we just never do, like it happens almost every year.
We should do something about that.
Hence November. Um so the, you know, perhaps, you know, we'll, you know, have a at least an initial discussion to look at it. Um as Jocelyn is our only employee that we manage. Um I think we owe it um to have a an effective uh evaluation.
Give me a thing for me, um.
Yeah, do you wanna take a look at the rubric and see?
Yeah, I, yeah, it's like, I I I wouldn't even know where to look for um alternative. Items, I know I've looked in the past and found like nothing, like it's it's been um. It's weird, it's weird, it's like the one thing about libraries that like no one has stuff to share about, at least that I was able to find of. How we evaluate directors.
All of them are very subjective, like.
Oh, there, you know, uh it was so funny as I think about this and and you'll see it when. Um there is a um, there's an item on there that I think, I like how many years. I and other trustees have said, the comment was, I've had no opportunity to observe this. And it was, and it's like, then why do we even still have this question? And it's just like, and it's just like year after year, like six out of seven people say, I've had no opportunity to observe this. And it's like, oh, we should take this off and next year it's.
I will say with my employees that I manage. I will ask them, it's like, you know, what, are there any particular accomplishments or concepts? You would like us to focus and consider when we review those rubrics, so I don't know.
Well, the the process has been is that the director completes a self evaluation. And um.
That's what I was meaning, what you wanted to make me.
Well, yes, that will be, there there will be a song, yes.
He was thinking it and you were supposed to know that.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we'll go through it, we can go through it a little bit more in um in November, but I wanted to get a start on it um. Now, you know, so that it's not, wow, I wish we had like, you know, thought of a better. Questions or something. When we're handing it out.
You have it now, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Typically, in in the in the past um. Uh the director will um.
I mean, the timeline and process for reviewing the rubber, what are you talking about?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna have, send it out before the November meeting and or and then we could. Have a discussion here at the table um during the meeting.
So is that a closed session?
No, no, it'll be.
But so do.
We're not talking about like what, how we were populated, we're talking about like. I'm sorry, but yeah, like, you know, looking at.
We'll look at questions.
Yeah.
And then at the January meeting, we'll probably.
We'll do, well, the Jan- in January, we'll ask Jocelyn to, cuz we'll wanna have any any changes. To that, to that evaluation tool in place by January, cuz. Jocelyn will do her self evaluation using that.
Okay.
Tools, that way we can kind of compare it versus what we use when we do your evaluation um. And then uh so she does that in January, we then start our process in January. And then usually February and March uh or March depending on when folks complete their evaluations.
Individual and then we come together?
Yeah, in a closed session and um. And and I can go through all this in more detail in November, uh but big, big overview, she does her self evaluation. We do individual uh trustee evaluations, then we meet in closed session to um discuss. Overall and uh possible changes in compensation.
So the thing I'm trying to understand is if you're sending it to us right before the November meeting. We discuss it in November, we don't meet in December, how does?
We have voted to approve it in January.
We did, it's the the rubric is not something we vote to approve of, it is something we just use.
Okay.
It can be anything.
So it should be finalized in November.
We can start, we can discuss the changes in November and then if we'll, I can, whatever we get together. I can send out in the meantime and you can respond individually to me with edits so that uh. I will send it out individually and you can respond individually um with suggestions. And we'll be able to do that over December and, you know. And then we can present, if we wanna have a further discussion in January and present it. Um then at that time, what that rubric looks like at the January meeting to Jocelyn for her to use. And then she gives us her self evaluation in February.
Okay, so January will present whatever you've collected individually?
Yeah.
And then it will be given to Jocelyn?
Yes.
Okay, um can you send it like soon?
Sure.
Just so we have time. Just end your.
You know. We'll see if we can't come up with a better question than the question whenever it's a.
All right, with that, I believe we have uh concluded our agenda this evening. And we stand adjourned until November.